I'll call to order the Monday, January 25th, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with a roll call. Mayor Mike Fournier here, calling in from Royal Oak, Michigan. Mr. Douglas?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Hunt?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Perush?
Here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Dubac?
I'm here in Royal Oak.
And Commissioner Colo?
I'm also here in Royal Oak.
All right, wonderful. All right, we're gonna now have an invocation given by myself, Mayor Fournier, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we come together to serve our neighbors and manage the important business of the place we call home, our Royal Oak community. Last week, we celebrated the life and teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Much of what Dr. King taught us remains relevant today, especially in the division that is being sown among us and between us. In another similar time, Dr. King said, "We still have a choice today: nonviolent coexistence or violent coannihilation. This may well be mankind's last chance to choose between chaos and community." Indeed, we still have a choice today. We can choose community over chaos. We can choose to extend the benefit of the doubt instead of bearing false witness against those we disagree with. We can choose truth and trust while rejecting deceit and deception. We can choose to seek understanding from those we differ with versus slinging insults and accusations. We can choose to make our case to others on things we are passionate about instead of obstructing the will of the majority. The community is not built on agreement among all its citizens. In fact, the opposite. Debate, listening, tolerance, acceptance, and respecting the outcomes of our democratic processes, even when we don't like the results, are the hallmark of a strong community. There are those among us who wish to divide us for personal gain. This has been true since the beginning of human cooperation. It is the obligation of every free person to stand against the forces of obstruction, deceit, and manipulation. Let us be ever mindful that the true enemies we battle today are misplaced anger, willful ignorance, and unfettered greed. We fight these enemies by taking the higher road, remembering what community is, and loving thy neighbor. We pray for the health and safety of those who serve our city, both in uniform and not. We pray for those who fight to bring an end to the pandemic and those who keep us going during these most challenging times. Amen. I'll ask to stand for the pledge if you can. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." This brings us to item number five tonight, which is public comment. Ms. Schwanger?
Good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission. I have six public comments, and I'm going to play them again by sharing my screen and the sound. You may want to turn your sound up just a little on your machines if you have any issues with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, this is Martin Verity. I reside on Evergreen Drive and I'm calling in regard to item I on the Consent Agenda: Approval of Standard Resolution 1 for Special Assessment for paving a public alley west of Evergreen. I ask that you approve this resolution as five residences share this alley for access to our garages and the alley is currently in bad shape. It's currently made of asphalt and has many low areas and potholes that cause large puddles to form after rain and damage the suspensions on our cars. We tried to cold patch the alleyway multiple times over the past years, but what's really needed is a total rebuild. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and again, please approve Resolution I. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chuck Altman. I am a 20-year resident of Royal Oak. I am calling in support of the community-wide goal of reducing greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 and the goal of net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Thank you for your efforts to address climate change and to create a sustainable city. Thank you.
Hi, this is Robert Brunner. I live on North Pleasant Street in Royal Oak. Climate change caused by human activity is threatening the habitability of our whole planet now. It's not just the temperature change, it's the shifts in plant and animal life that happen as the climate changes. Action on every level is called for, from personal to local to statewide to national to global, and I therefore strongly support the most stringent actions that Royal Oak can take to address this, in particular, the report that you're considering now. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
This is Coco Brunner. I've lived in Royal Oak with my husband since 2001. I'm calling about the Resolution for Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Goals. I support this resolution. I hope the City Commission will vote it in and act on its basis. If anything, I would be happy to see the 2050 end goal date moved a little earlier because I think that the issues involved are so serious. Also, in addition, it would be really wonderful if the measurements that couldn't be included, such as the effects of yard equipment and off-road vehicles, although I don't know how many those there are, air conditioner emissions, things like that, it would be terrific if those could somehow be folded into the figures at some future date. But all in all, I think this is a very good step, perhaps a first step, which can be improved upon in the future. I really urge you to pass it. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Paul Vial. I've lived in Royal Oak for 30 years. I have recently been appointed to the Environmental Advisory Board. I've been a Democratic Precinct Delegate since 2018, and I am Royal Oak Democrat Precinct Delegate Liaison. City Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment this evening. I'm calling in support of the Resolution for Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Goals. Our world has changed dramatically in the last two decades. The pace of change will only increase. The coming change will include a multitude of global disruptions resulting from the extremely high levels of carbon dioxide in the Earth's atmosphere. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change recommends that humanity must reduce its greenhouse gas emissions significantly and quickly to prevent the planet from getting too hot. This is no time to be timid. We must set our goals and make every effort to achieve them. Please support and pass the Resolution for City Greenhouse Gas Emission Reduction Goals this evening. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is John Galletka. I will preface this comment by saying I voted for a new president and wholeheartedly welcome our reentry into the Paris Climate Agreement. Working within the automotive field, I look forward to the benefits of electric vehicles and the reduction of greenhouse gases. I commend the states and cities that stood by the Paris Agreement when the US pulled out of it a couple of years ago. I'm very much in favor of improving our environment. In reading the greenhouse gas proposal for Royal Oak that you have in front of you this evening, I have three issues to address. It will be a good thing that the city takes climate warming into account going forward in its own purchases and actions. The city starts with the deficit from policies of the last few years encouraging growth of an urban atmosphere that is brought with at many large buildings and attendant pavement, thereby greatly increasing our heat footprint and contributing to global warming. Through reading of tonight's proposal, I see there's an emphasis on the environmental impact of residents leading their lives and the suggestion that there should be incentives for them and businesses to reduce that impact. If the City Commission, in its wisdom, thinks that those incentives should be brought about by added taxes and fees, as in the case of the disastrous stormwater runoff scheme of last year, whereby incentives for installation of permeable driveways was to minimally offset the new tax, they should think again. The residents are well aware of the City Commission's increase in our debt load by a factor of 10 by its own choice and not a vote of the residents, as is in the case of Birmingham, and would not look kindly on it to levy new taxes and fees in the name of the environment, especially after increasing and enlarging the heat map of the city. Lastly, in the proposed process of passing new regulations and incentives, the proposal sets out the same seemingly transparent way of discussion and gathering of viewpoints for the City Commission to then ultimately approve what would have been their personal choice to start with. We have seen this process go awry many times in the recent past as in the coming destruction of the Veterans Memorial from its current state of reverence, where residents do offer specific viewpoints, which are then derided as not worthy enough. All important matters, especially those involving fees and taxes, should be put to a citywide vote. This greenhouse gas reduction proposal should not be passed without noting such. Thank you.
And that concludes tonight's call to end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. All right, that brings us to the approval of the agenda. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? By Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, I'll come up to the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Group?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt? Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Now, though, yes, we have an established agenda. That brings us to item seven, which is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the Consent Agenda? I will start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item L4.
L4. Okay, Commissioner Colo? Commissioner Colo, we're having a hard time.
Sorry about that. Yep, same. Commissioner Douglas beat me to the punch with a, or beat me to the draw with item L4. Council will pull off item 7B.
B. Okay. All righty. Anybody else? All right, the Consent Agenda now consists of City Commission meeting minutes from January 11th, approval of Rotation of Appointments Committee, claims of 15th and the 26th of January, approval of purchase orders, approval of millennial maintenance and support agreement, approval to purchase 9mm Glock handguns, approval of 2021 Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant, agreement and approval of Standard Resolution 1: Special Assessment of Paving of Public Alley West of Evergreen, approval of Standard Resolution 5 for Special Assessment for Paving of Delaware Avenue, approval of Standard Resolution 5 for Special Assessment Paving Masoy Avenue, or Masoy Road, and receive and file the non-action items, 2020 Form 5572 Pension Report, 2020 Form 5572 Other Post-Employment Benefits Report, and Notice of Earned 2020 Coronavirus Aid Recovery and Economic Security Act Reimbursement Grant Fund. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on the Consent Agenda as presented. Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy? Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Got you that time. Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
My vote, yes. Okay, the Consent Agenda is approved. We'll go in order here. B, mayoral appointment of Planning Commission. Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be fairly quick with this. I just wanted to thank Mr. Curtis for joining the Planning Commission. It's always an exciting night when someone's appointed to something. Although Mr. Curtis has been serving us very long and well on the ZBA, so he'll make a fine addition to the Planning Commission. With that, I'll move for this appointment.
A motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Okay, any discussion on the appointment of Mr. Curtis? Yeah, I'll just add that part of my calculus here is one, you know, we have a pretty good, and I'll say diverse, group of individuals on Planning Commission. I think Commissioner Douglas can vouch for that. People that bring different backgrounds to the table. And I think, you know, what we have architect, we have public policy, we have a whole number of backgrounds. I think the real estate part of this will be really helpful, and I think Mr. Curtis's long experience here in the Royal Oak market, his desire to serve, his willingness to serve, his experience on the zoning board, I think he'll really bring something informative and special to the to the Planning Commission, which is exactly why I picked him. And I'm glad that, at least at this point, Commissioner Colo concurs, so. All right. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Congratulations, and we'll see you at the next planning meeting. This brings us to Commissioner Douglas, item L4 from the Consent Agenda: Resolution for Greenhouse Gas Emission Reduction Goals. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item actually was mistakenly listed as a receive-and-file non-action item when in fact it is an action item. It is a resolution committing the city to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by the year 2030 and striving to reach net zero by 2050, as a couple of our callers pointed out and appreciate their calls today. I also appreciate the modesty of Mr. Vial, who didn't mention that he was an extremely active volunteer in assembling the data that allowed us to establish the baseline from which we project our savings. And I've taken the liberty of inviting our sustainability, our staff sustainability manager, Ms. Lyons-Brocker, the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Board, Ms. Herzog, and Mr. Vial himself to tell our viewers and the commission, of course, a little bit more about this report and this resolution. So I will leave it to Ms. Lyons-Brocker. Are you going to kick us off?
I think Erin is.
Okay.
You're muted.
So I was going to provide an introduction, and Commissioner Douglas did a pretty fine job of summing up most of it, and then I was going to turn it over to Julie Lyons-Brocker. I did also want to acknowledge Julie and her leadership on this, as well as the help from the volunteers, Paul being one of them, new recruit to the Environmental Advisory Board, as well as Andrew Saropoulos, who's not here tonight, but they did a lot with this. And just as way of background, this is coming to the commission again, having been introduced. Actually, this is sort of a follow-on from a resolution at the July 27th meeting, which affirmed the climate crisis and the city's commitment to combating it. And it was at that meeting also that the staff was instructed to begin this work, so. I don't have too much more else to add to sum it up, but I'll let Julie fill in the important details.
Okay, thank you so much. So you were given a PowerPoint and probably had a chance to read through all of that. It's a quick overview of the greenhouse gas inventory data coming out of the inventory work that we did, and then some thoughts about how to achieve the goals that we've come up with. I won't go through the whole PowerPoint, but I would like just to focus a little bit on the executive summary page and be sure that that information is made clear again. From our inventory, we did two inventories. We did a community-wide and then a municipal operations inventory. So our municipal work could be separated out. In the citywide emissions, 94.1% of those emissions happen from the top seven sectors. Commercial electricity is the first highest emitter at 24.9%. And then the residential energy, which includes electricity and natural gas, accounts for 32.9%. And it is the highest combination category that we have. If we move down to talk a little bit about the municipal operations, of all of the operations that the municipality engages in, it only accounts for 1.4% of citywide emissions total. So what our findings are is that the municipal operations and responding climate actions can only affect so much change that the majority of the reduction opportunities and responsibility is really going to fall on the community, the commercial and residential sectors, including, you know, people like me. But even so, one of the things we always want to look for when we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions reduction, most of it has to do with energy. And if indeed the residential energy category, including electricity and natural gas, are, you know, in combination, the highest emitter, that really shows that there are huge opportunities for residential energy waste reduction. That doesn't necessarily cost money, especially in the long run. It helps us reduce the greenhouse gas emissions and also save money because a lot of this, once we start looking into it, will be recognized as energy waste. And then again, for the top emitting single sector, which is commercial electricity, it's the same situation. So one of the things we want to focus on is to try to figure out when we get together with our Sustainability Action Plan work groups and the community for community engagement, what is the best way to tackle those greenhouse gas emitting sectors and categories? So I wanted just to make sure that, you know, it's understood where we're coming from. This was a surprise for me. I expected municipal operations to have a much higher footprint with our greenhouse gas emissions, but it doesn't. So now, really, once we get started, we need to focus in on commercial electricity and residential electricity and natural gas. But that's not to say that we won't move forward on municipal operations and tightening up our buildings, reducing energy waste that we find because that is all, you know, important ways to save money and to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. So that said, I'm interested in opening this up for questions from the commission. And like Commissioner Douglas mentioned, Paul Vial is here to help us if there are some detailed questions. He was our quality assurance engineer for all of the data. And then also Amanda Herzog from the Environmental Advisory Board. She is the Chair. And she and her group will be helping us move forward and reaching out to the community to make our next steps. So with that, I'll turn it over and be happy to have questions to the three of us and go from there.
Thank you, Bricker. We really appreciate the introduction there, and Dr. Herzog and Mr. Vial. It's good to see you guys. I think the commission has had familiarity with the good work that each of you do, and to see you here together, supporting and working and driving an important initiative is very encouraging. We need traction. We need it quick. But since Ms. Lyons-Brocker, you know, opened it up for questions, I'll open it up to the commission. Do you have any questions for the team or anybody individually? Commissioner Macy?
I'm just going to follow up on what she said right at the end there. It sounds like she's handing it off to four more next steps. Let's talk about that. What does it, what do the next steps look like from here? I think that, I think that was to Paul and Amanda. I'm not sure. I think she was handing that to them.
Sure, I can take that. First, I just want to say thank you for your continued commitment in prioritizing climate change action in the city. That's for the whole commission. Royal Oak is a leader in the state in these initiatives, which will support local economy, public health, and the environment. So for us, as the EAB, our next step, this was the inventory and these goals was to see the baseline, right? Where are we and where do we want to go? And the goals were determined around what is happening at the state and federal and global level. Scientifically, these all align. So we feel very comfortable with that. Now, they're a little aggressive for a little city like us, but with technology and policy, that will be the heavy lift. Lift. So our next step is to do the sustainability plan. And that will, all this information will inform that. We're going to look at many categories like energy, transportation, water, waste. Quality of life. Life, like life. And so this will all inform that, and you'll, there's a slide that kind of talks about that. We're going to go into work groups and be out in the communities and they, so that people can give us you know, their thoughts on this. We want this very transparent and open dialogue. We don't want to just say, we're going to do this, this, and this. And then we want to evaluate what our action steps are, right? So not every action will have the equal outcome. We want to have, you know, really big outcomes, right? So we want to take those actions that will give us that so that we can meet our goals. So I hope that answers the question I want to next answer.
Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for your work on this. This is really exciting to see some tangible, actionable, really meaningful information about where we are and, you know, to inform where we want to go. So Ms. Lyons-Brocker, I know this, it wouldn't have happened without you championing it on staff, and Dr. Herzog and Mr. Vial with the work of the Environmental Advisory Board, you know, for years, helping to lead and drive us towards a sustainable policy. I think we're getting to a place now where we're actually going to be able to start to institute some things to drive change. I'm really excited about it. And so as a follow-up to Commissioner Macy's question, as part of this next steps, would you be bringing specific policy recommendations to the commission as to not just what we can do internally, but what can we do with regard to, you know, development incentives or regulations to ensure more sustainable development is coming to our city? Or are we talking about policies around residential work? Is that kind of what's coming next?
Yeah, I would say so. So the the document that we're going to work on is the Sustainability Action Plan. And it's really going to, you know, be focused around the actions. And so my considerations right now is that we would work on this Sustainability Action Plan, again, you know, very transparent with lots of community input in partnership with the EAB to come up with the first draft and a second draft, and then get it prepared for the final to bring to you all. And so in that presentation to you of the Climate Action Plan, within that document, the actions will be embedded. And I'm thinking that we would probably have them scored in some way so that we can, you know, start prioritizing because there are, like I said earlier, many opportunities, but we only have so much time and bandwidth as we're set up right now. So the answer is yes. We still need to figure out what it's going to exactly look like. But the intention is to bring actions, not just a narrative, a documented narrative.
And just to add on to that, we are already doing a lot in the city. And there's a slide in the presentation that kind of lists out some of those things. Julie has a longer list. So it's not like we're waiting until next year to do things. Things are in action as it's going on right now. We're also talking, we're going, Julie and I and Paul and are going to a lot of workshops to make sure that we're in line with the state on some things. And we're meeting other communities that will join together and advocate for things at the state level as well. So there is going to be a lot of policy that will have to come about to make some of these changes.
And that's certainly something we'd want to be engaged in. We can help inform Michigan Municipal League and other like-minded cities around those policy pushes. Again, thank you all for your work on this and your leadership. I'm excited about the direction and, you know, everything that you've put into this is really going to drive positive change for the city. So thank you.
Commissioner Dubac?
Julie, you know, I just was wondering if I could add, you know, one of the thoughts that's going on in terms of how we will deliver the actions is putting together a larger task force that would essentially function as a steering committee, that, you know, we would invite, you know, folks from Beaumont-Hamilton. folks from Beaumont Hospital and businesses and residents to, and, and other members of the EAB to be part of a task force. And then with, with this task force, then we would, we would create focus groups that would focus on specific aspects within the sustainability plan. And that we would have a, a year to come up with more concrete actions as to what, what's gonna take place. So I think that's really an important piece as to how we see us going forward.
I think that's my idea and I think contract to, a contract to, uh, you know, some of the commentary, most of which was supported tonight. But some commentary was that, you know, we're just gonna be like, you know, unilaterally pushing things out to the community without considering impact. And I think it's important that we recognize that this is gonna come from conversations with community, with primary stakeholders, because we're all in this together. And if, if, if we set goals that we can achieve, um, then, you know, it's for naught. So attainable goals and actual plans to get there and buy in from community is what this is all about. So Mr. Vial, I think that's an essential part of how we move forward. And let me know, you know, if there's any way for me to be a part of it.
Yeah, Mr. Vial, I think you bring up a really good point. And I think, you know, it's not just important to have the goals. It's not just important to have the best ideas and policies and regulations or whatever it takes us to get us there. We need the education of our residents and business partners in the community and other stakeholders. And we need involvement. We need their ideas and, and support and, you know, be part of the process. And I think as a city, we found some of the greatest successes, um, you know, with, let's say, Normandy Oaks. We always bring that up as a good example. We brought a lot of people together from folks that that park was gonna impact their neighborhood right there, to people that were gonna have to drive a couple miles to use it. Uh, so I think you guys are really honing in on the right way to go about this. And, and I think it just adds an underscore of confidence in what you're doing and, and your plan. So the more involvement we can get, the more we can preemptively counter bad information that inevitably is gonna get out there. You know, the more we can have an honest dialogue with each other in this community to do what's right and what's moral and what's appropriate as stewards of this planet. So thank you. I see Mr. Colo had a question as well.
So I'll just start by echoing everything that's been said already. This is such an exciting document to see today. You know, it's continuing the work that started long ago and you all are doing a great job and thank you. You know, this, uh, this body just moved, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago to make some changes to our tree planting. And, you know, we're trying to reset green canopy. So I hope to see, um, I hope to see that really incorporated into this next plan. So I, I just have two, two questions around this. Um, one deals with the timeline. So I see we're aiming for a forty percent reduction in what's now nine years. And then it was at the, cause zero net greenhouse gases by twenty forty. Was that twenty four or twenty fifty? I'm sorry. By, by twenty fifty. Yeah. So, um, that, that's great, but twenty nine years seems like a long time. What, you know, how, how are those dates set? And is there anything we can do as a community or what's, what, what's the steps to maybe hasten that off?
Well, I can, I can take one, one of those parts. So, um, we look to global organizations, you know, the IPCC in particular, and their latest report in twenty nineteen came back with that minimizing the reduction to two degrees Celsius may not be enough. And so one point five is now the goal. And at one point five, that is the year that they say, you know, we need to be net zero by. Like, uh, one of our callers mentioned, if we could do it earlier, you know, all the better. But again, you know, we're in, in our city, we're trying to juggle ambitious with realistic. And the other thing I would like to mention in the resolution, one of the items that we're asking for approval is that we're able to have resources to do this inventory every three years. Not only to gauge our progress, but to also, you know, just reevaluate. If it looks like we're doing great, you know, maybe we shorten up the timeframe. If it looks like we're struggling in the beginning, you know, then we, we have to readjust. And so I, one of the things I'd like to make really clear is that this is, you know, in some ways flexible uh, work that we're doing, because we don't know what kind of technologies might be here in four years or six years or eight years. And so we're making our best guesses, you know, based on what we see with other cities, with our state. Both of our utilities, you would see in the report that both of the utilities have a goal of consumers is net zero by twenty forty. And DTE is net zero by twenty fifty. So, you know, that's a long-winded way to say, you know, we've, we've looked to the outside for those goals, fully recognizing that they may be adjusted one way or another. I hope that's helpful.
And this is, we have to think of this as a journey and not a destination. We're going to learn and iterate through this whole process. And, you know, some of these areas, we might get to zero quicker than others. And we might have to lean on other supports or resources to get to the final twenty fifty.
No, I'll just add, it makes sense because that is a longer horizon. And in three years, we don't know what the technological advancements will be. Maybe there's a new thing invented that allows us to get there even quicker. And we should push ourselves if that's the case. We should, it's about the journey. I like how you said that, Dr. Herzog. And, and part of the journey is challenging yourself. You know, not just flying business class, uh, you know, waiting till you arrive. We gotta take control of the jet here a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, as a manufacturer's thingy, a official word that you typically use?
Is what?
Is that term thingy, is that typical of your products?
Yeah, it's actually an acronym, Commissioner Colo. I'll explain it to you. You know, as a highly, highly skilled professional, uh, we do use the word thingy from time to time. Or when?
Okay, so, uh, but back to the board. I think you all, I, you know, I understand that we're not gonna undo hundreds of years of damage that fast. So I know, I, I definitely appreciate all that you're doing. And then, you know, one question I do have, when collecting this report, I saw that food consumption was not included in it. And my understanding is that is a major source of greenhouse gases. Could, could we talk about that and why that was left out? And, and, you know, are we gonna look at ways to reduce it also?
You know, one of the things that we did when we did the report and did all the quantifying was, you know, what could we quantify? And also, um, well, yeah, that was, that was the main reason, or one of the main reasons for excluding food is to, you know, to really be able to say, um, how, how much Royal Oak's food consumption contributes to greenhouse gas warming. Very, very difficult. So, and then also too, in terms of, um, just the challenge in terms of the outreach that would be needed to, um, you know, get folks to, you know, eat a more vegan diet. Where we, we wanna be practical. So, um, so that's, uh, you know, another, another reason for excluding food. Also, we excluded all personal consumption. So, you know, that's people's, uh, purchases, trips abroad, uh, you know, um, we, we really, we could, we could focus on, uh, you know, utilities. We were able to get utility information from Detroit Edison and from Consumers Power. So we know exactly how much the community, um, what, what were the greenhouse gases from their energy use. We did a great, really good estimation about automobile CO2 emissions from automobiles. But that's not, not perfect. And, you know, we, we had to do a lot of assumptions. So anyway, long answer, but, uh, um, yeah, very, very difficult to quantify. So we did not include it.
But I, I would like to add that waste, it will be considered in the sustainability plan. And knowing that, um, food waste is such a big part of carbon emissions, uh, community composting will be something that we will probably eventually bring to the commission as something that we would like to, to see. And I know that it's already happening at, at the city level or at the city. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Commissioner Colo, we have, uh, composting that started, um, at the library um, as the pilot program and has moved on to the senior center and now to city hall also. So, um, you know, the pilot worked out well. And so we're, you know, continuing to watch how, how is this, um, effort moving along?
Great. Thank you all. I know that's, uh, that data manning had to be very, uh, arch. So thank you for doing that.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, if there are no further questions, I'd like to make a motion that the commission approve the document in front of us with really four elements to it. One, establishing greenhouse gas reduction goals. Two, committing the city to, um, the baseline of the twenty eighteen study. But three, uh, requiring the city to continue to update the data and move the goalposts uh, as might be necessary or likely. Um, and thirdly, to develop a, a citywide sustainability plan to be completed by early twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion. No discussion. I'm just grateful that the, the team could find time to be here with us tonight. Um, I think what you're doing is, is, uh, you know, exactly how we need to, to start. And I think like Dr. Herzog said, we, we are doing some things already. But, you know, to get some smart people together and start turning the data to make sure that the gears are actually working together. I think that's the tricky part, uh, because, you know, we wanna be, uh, efficient. And, uh, with, with our policies and our process that we move forward. And, and I think, um, you guys are the right people. And we're very grateful for your service to the city. And so, um, you know, we look forward to having many more discussions here. All right, I'll call for the vote. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Prush.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote enthusiastically, yes. All right. Wonderful. Now the work begins. I'm sure you, you know, you signed up for it. Now here we go. Watch out.
Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure. All right. I see Mr. Twing here brings us to the first and last item on our regular agenda, which is the Planning Commission recommendation for the rezoning of thirteen ten to seventeen sixteen North Stevenson Highway from neighborhood business to general business. Mr. Twing.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the commission. You do have a planning commission recommendation for those five addresses or properties from the planning commission. Uh, what I would point out for background, you may recall that in November, uh, you had received a request to rezone sixteen hundred North Stevenson, uh, from neighborhood business to general business, uh, which was approved at that time. Since then, staff, the city received, uh, an application from the property owner at fifteen hundred North Stevenson. And at that time, uh, the planning division initiated, uh, providing, uh, public hearing notice for the other four properties or addresses, uh, in that segment of North Stevenson. Basically, the east side of North Stevenson from twelve mile south to the intersection with I seventy-five. To change the property from, uh, uh, neighborhood business to general business. Uh, you will see the planning commission is recommending, uh, approval. Uh, there's a list of their reasoning in the commission letter. Uh, and there is a suggested resolution at the end of the city commission letter. Uh, the one thing I would point out, just for reference, when I click on the link to the January twelfth, twenty twenty-one uh, staff report is indicating your commission letter, it appears it's taken me to the October report rather than the January one. So, uh, we would get that updated, uh, as part of your second reading. So it's referencing our correct link, at least it's where it's taken me. So.
Questions with the wing? Christian Colo.
I just have one quick question, uh, sir. I'm looking at, you know, looking at the map that's provided in the first page of the packet. The property is just south of twelve mile. The red square encompassing them stops at the easement. So it looks like includes the parking lot of the dollar store, includes the auto shop. But it doesn't look like includes the green area of the grass. Is that, is that just a drawing on the map? It, it does include all the property, correct?
No, actually, the Stevenson Highway right of way is wider at that location than it is the rest of the way. So that green belt area is actually part of Stevenson Highway right of way. It's a anomaly in terms of where the right of way and the properties end.
So if that were ever to be vacated, it would have to be changed. The zoning would change at that time?
Uh, basically what happens on a vacation is i- if the right of way is vacated, it, it takes over the zoning from the adjacent property. The ordinance references that when that occurs.
Okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
Any other questions? I mean, this is something that we had talked about with the one application, you know, did it make sense? Why are we doing a one-off? And I think the planning commission took it to task and remedied that issue. And anyone that's ever been up in that area, you know, this makes a lot of sense, at least in our opinion, from the planning commission point of view. You don't need a dissertation. Uh, you can, you can literally drive by and, and, and know that this makes sense. All right. Any other discussion, questions, motions? Or we have a Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of this on first reading.
A motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak? All right, um, discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I wanna thank the staff for, uh, bringing this to us and, and moving fairly quickly on it. Uh, you may recall that at our, at our previous meeting, I had voted against the rezoning of a single property in this area. And I, I think I made clear at the time that I agreed that the area really had a general business, uh, characteristic. And my only objection was to the spot zoning. So now we've resolved that issue. And I think zone this or are proposing to zone this properly. Um, and I certainly will be supporting the motion.
Mr. Macy.
Just a question for Commissioner Prush. We had a couple of options on this, I think. And one of them, two of them were to adopt upon first reading. But one was with, uh, public hearing prior to final submission. And one was at, with, without, which, which are we doing?
Um, if I see, I'm still on it. Um, it was my intention to, um, approve it on first reading without another public hearing.
Commissioner Douglas, was there much public comment on this?
No.
Thanks.
No, I don't, I don't think you find the only public comment you would get would be with the property owners themselves. And they would not object to this, just out of pure the ability to have many more options. Uh, Commissioner Colo, then Commissioner Douglas.
Um, I also voted against the original, uh, rezoning. When we did this, it was one plot of land. And now I completely agree with the rezoning of all this plot. But I'll say again, as I did then, um, I'm not interested in changing all the neighborhood businesses in Royal Oak. This is a, a fairly unique property, a fairly, fairly unique zone. Um, and I believe that it fits here and would not fit in just about any other spot in the city.
Excellent point. Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yeah, to your point, Mayor, yes, this is an advantageous change to all of the property owners there. But I will point out that any of, uh, many, uh, in fact, I would say most of the uses that are allowed here do require a special land use. So the city will get an opportunity to review any proposals for their, to, for their appropriateness.
All right, anybody else? All right, we call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Prush.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Colo.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So it's approved. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Relatively short meeting, uh, notwithstanding anything else for the betterment of our community. We can entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Prush.
And we adjourned in relatively early time.
Is there a second? Christian Douglas.
A new land speed record.
I tell ya. Um, that's, uh, I mean, I kinda feel awkward about. That's, I mean, I kind of feel awkward about it, not gonna lie to you. Feel like there's much more business coming, but, you know, the work never ends. We're just gonna have to have a longer agenda next time, so. Just a warning, get your coffee ready. All right.
But we gotta get in time and get home in time before it starts to snow. So it's good that we're leaving early.
All right, well, I'll call for the vote. Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Prush.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
I vote yes, so we are adjourned. Great work, people. Thank you, staff, for preparing tonight's meeting. Thank you to the Environmental Advisory Board and everybody else, Mr. Vial and Ms. Lyons Bricker for for bringing us up to speed on the awesome things we're doing from an environmental point of view. Thank you, Ms. Schwanger, thank you, Richard, for for your help making a smooth lit or a smooth meeting tonight. And I thank you for anybody who was tuning in. We look forward to seeing you next time. Appreciate everything, everyone stay safe and healthy. Take care.